Good evening. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:02 PM. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig.
Here.
Mr. Shockley.
Here.
Ms. Lima.
Here.
Mrs. Dixon here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I have a motion to recess into executive session for the following. Agenda item A1, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A1, discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss the following board openings, Planning Commission and Friends of Human Services. Agenda item A2, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A2, on discussion regarding Lake Tyogue and Rhode Island DEM versus the town of Coventry, Kent County 2002-5561. And agenda item three, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A2, litigation for discussion of the following matter, Social Holdings LLC versus the town of Coventry, KC 2020-0769. May I have a motion? Who said that?
I was sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I seconded it, Anne.
Thank you. I have to take meeting minutes, that's why I have to record everything. Okay, roll call. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Lima? Mrs. Lima? Mrs. Dixon, thank you. Foyers, no nays. The motion is approved. Council members, please access the Zoom link for the executive session. Thank you. Okay, we're ready. Is everyone ready? Okay, excellent. We will now reconvene in public session of the Coventry Town Council. The time is 7:31. Do I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Second, please.
Second from Hillary.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you are in favor of adjourning from executive session. Foyers, no nays. We are now adjourned from executive session. Members of the public, welcome. A warm welcome to our presenters this evening. The council met an executive session for the following, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A1, discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss the following board openings, Planning Commission and Friends of Human Services. The council made a decision to appoint a member to the candidate for the Planning Commission and to appoint three candidates for the Friends of Human Services. In relationship to the second item, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A2, on discussion regarding Lake Tyogue and Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management versus the town of Coventry, KC 2002-5561, no votes were taken. And A3, closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A2, litigation for discussion of the following matter, Social Holdings LLC versus the town of Coventry, KC 20200769. No votes were taken, but a discussion was held to discuss process to follow. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second, please.
Hillary, second.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you're in favor of sealing the minutes of the executive session. Thank you. Foyers, no nays. The motion is approved. Agenda item C3, the presenter has withdrawn from the presentation as the issue is no longer relevant. Next, may I have a motion to move agenda item C6 to C3, proclamation for the Coventry High School football team? To move the agenda item.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you're in favor of moving the agenda item. Thank you. Foyers, no nays. The motion is approved. Item C2, approval of the meeting minutes for March 31st, 2021. Members of the council, excuse me, members of the council have, and all corrections been sent to the clerk. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections?
Just one.
Okay, thank you. Members of the council, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you approve the amended motion, amended minutes, please, for March 31st, 2021. Thank you. Foyers, no nays. The minutes are approved as amended. Madam Clerk, please read agenda item C3, which is the proclamation for the football team.
Proclamation declaring June 15th, 2021 to be Coventry High School Football Team Division III Championship Day.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome Superintendent Levis. High school principal is Brooke with us this evening.
Yeah, just had something come up. She's not able to attend, so she gives her regrets, but I will do my best to introduce our coach and entertain any questions from the council.
Okay, thank you. And I also would like to welcome Mr. Gary Goodhart. This is your first time attending one of our council meetings, so welcome. You're the football coach, your first-year coach with our, with our high school team. First, to members of the football team, the town of Coventry recognizes your achievements and is presenting to each of the 36 members of the football team a special Town of Coventry proclamation, which has a list of the entire team and their football jersey numbers. So each member of the team will receive a signed proclamation, which we will forward to you. Second, to the members of the football team, the town of Coventry recognizes your achievements and has a special proclamation that was designed by our executive assistant to the town manager, Stephanie Inn, and with text provided by our council member, Mrs. Hillary Lima. Mrs. Lima was the one who initiated the request to have the recognition on our agenda. So thank you, Mrs. Lima, for recognizing the great need for us to celebrate this great victory. First of all, I would just like to show you proclamation.
And Coach Goodhart, I'm a wizard graduate, so I just appreciate good football.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
I know you can't see this. If we were in person, you'd be able to see it better, but this is the proclamation which we're going to present to you and we'll read it this evening. The proclamation for each of the members of the football team, we won't read, but the text is similar. So I'm going to start off by reading the proclamation, because it's, it's a little lengthy, but it's very, very valuable. And as I mentioned, Mrs. Lima did provide all the text for us. This is a proclamation presented to the Coventry High School Football Team, Rhode Island Division III Champions. Whereas the Coventry High School Football Team persevered and took the field in an abnormal spring football season in the middle of a global pandemic. And whereas the Coventry Oakers entered the championship game with a perfect six to zero record overall, finishing first in Division III football standings. And whereas the Coventry Oakers defeated the Johnson Panthers with a score of 43 to eight. And whereas, as they gave their all in a shortened season, facing many obstacles with a first-year head coach, and still put in 100% effort day in and day out, all while representing the town of Coventry with top skills, class and pride. And whereas the Coventry High School Football Team went on to winning the Rhode Island Division III Football Championship. And now therefore be it resolved, the town of Coventry hereby congratulates and proclaims Tuesday, June 15th, as the Coventry High School Football Team Division III Champions Day. So you have a special day tomorrow. We are pleased to extend this expression of our pride in your accomplishment and our appreciation for the distinction you have brought to our community by your inspired team play. Mr. Goodhart, congratulations, and I'd like to ask you to say a few words for us about your team.
Thank you so much, number one. It's, it's an honor. It's quite incredible you guys are taking the time to, to giving us any sort of recognition. We, we just appreciate it so much. Thank you for those kind words. For me, it's, I was very fortunate to inherit a team that was, was destined to win. We're ready to win, and we just have a really, really good group of kids. Last, last week, I had an opportunity to talk to the, the school committee, and you know, we, we just have a lot of kids that are, you know, they really care about school. We have right around 20 kids that have a 4.0 to a 5.0 GPA. Like we, out of all those, those 36 kids, we have probably 20 of them carry a 4.0, 4.5, 4.7, 4.9. I mean, it's quite incredible. So they work really hard in school. They work really hard in their, their sports, not just football. We have really good baseball players. We have good basketball players. I mean, it's just, we're just very fortunate to have a lot of good athletes that really take the time to dedicate themselves to not just football, but school and, and work and their families all around. You know, we're part of a really good community. We're just very thankful that you guys have taken the time to recognize us. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. This is, I know it's difficult, but the proclamation for the, you can see the names of all of the football players and their jersey numbers. So it's a very, very nice one, and we've signed one for each of the players. So they will be sent off to the school so that could be distributed, because we wanted to recognize every single student and have, make sure that each one had his own proclamation. So unfortunately, we can't send ice cream or something else to, to the school tomorrow. It is your championship day, but we want you to know that as members of the council, we are very proud of what you've done. And we know that there are many teams and many groups of students, cheerleaders, et cetera, who have brought great pride to our school this year. And we're very grateful for the recognition that they have brought to Coventry as a, as a school that is a comprehensive school that does support, even in this pandemic year, many activities. So I'd like to ask members of the council if they'd like to say a few words. Mrs. Ludwig.
I'll give my time. I think Ms. Lima was before me.
Okay, Mrs. Lima.
Oh, I just wanted to say, while, you know, you emphasize that the players are very dedicated to their studies as well, and that's, that's super important. Having a, having a team like, like you had this year, especially during a pandemic, that's the kind of stuff that glues a community together. So I think we can all recognize here that the work you did was beyond just the football field. It's about building community and pride, and I'm certainly very appreciative of that. And I look forward to seeing what the team does moving forward. So thank you very much for what you do and, and your time and effort that you give to the youth of our community. So really, really appreciate it. Thank you, Coach.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you, President Dixon. So, Mr. Goodheart, thank you so much. Thank you to the team. It's really fun to celebrate these types of wins at a town level. I will second Councilmember Lima's mention of community. And, you know, I just want to encourage anybody else who's watching, we want to celebrate the wins with you. And so when you have big things happen, you know, please bring them in, because this is, this is a place that we can celebrate together. So thank you very much for the great season. Thank you to the team. And anyone else who has great things happening, please reach out to your council member, and we'll be happy to bring them into this forum.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
And Mrs. Shockley.
Yes, thank you. You know, it was really exciting to see the season unfold for this group of young men. And I know how excited they were to be able to play this year. You know, the disappointment when they thought they might lose the season. It is not being able to have a season. And I was really just so thrilled for them that they not only get to have their season, but they got to succeed in such a profound way. Some of them probably leaving high school after this year. And I think the memories they're going to take with them from this are incredible. And just knowing that they also are scholar athletes and are going to go on to even greater things, much as they might not believe it now. It's really exciting to hear these great things happen. I'm, I'm proud of the boys. I'm proud of the school, and I'm really looking forward to next season.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shockley. And I just make a note that the school committee chairperson, Mrs. Patno, and I have a regular routine and tradition, and we would go to the football game on Thanksgiving Day, whether it was at West Ward or whether it was in Coventry. And what always impressed me is not so much that the team didn't win, but there were so many alumni who came to the game. And there was so much pride in the town of Coventry and even pride in the football team, even though they had many challenges. People really rallied around the team. They came from all over, different states. They delayed, even some of them told us they were delaying their lunches because they had to see the football game. So we're very happy that you were able to, to bring a win and also to build the team of students. We know that they wanted to play very desperately, and they came out and they did the job, and they said they would do it, and they did it. So thank you so much. Mr. Goodhart, any final comments you'd like to make?
I just, thank you so much for the recognition again. You guys' support means a lot to not only me, but the rest of the community and the school. And it's just quite incredible you guys take the time to do this for us. So thank you again.
It's our pleasure. Mr. Levis, Superintendent Levis, any final comments?
Just want to thank Coach Goodhart. You know, we had a young, a great young coach that had an opportunity that he couldn't refuse and left. And Mr. Goodhart, you know, if you remember, financially, we weren't sure we were going to have any activities. And he stepped in and just, I think when I, when I spoke to the, some of the players early on, it was evident how, how important leadership is and the leadership he provided. It's nice to have the wins. It's nice to have this incredible season. But his interaction with our scholar athletes, day in and day out, they, they just wanted to play for him. And I think it's a testament. He's our permanent coach moving forward. And, you know, for him to step up, I think he deserves a lot of recognition along with his coaching staff. So again, I want to thank the council for recognizing him. I think the proclamation that you put together for each athlete is incredible. And, but Coach Goodhart deserves a lot, and his coaches deserve a lot of this credit. So again, I want to thank Coach Goodhart, and I want to thank the council for recognizing him.
Fine. And as Ms. Ludwig mentioned, please bring forth other groups that we would like to recognize. We are happy to recognize the activities of the staff and of the students, because we, we want them to feel special, and they are special to us. So thank you so much. Okay. If you'd like to remain, please feel free to see the rest of the meeting. But other than that, it's been a long day, I'm sure, for many of you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good evening. We're moving on to agenda item C4, presentation by Enterprise Fleet Management. Madam Clerk, would you read the agenda item, please, C4?
Presentation by Enterprise Fleet Management Lease Plan Agreement Program for FY 2021-2022.
Thank you. Mr. Marshant, would you like to make a few comments about this program?
Yes, thank you. This is a program that the town of Coventry has been looking at for some time now, maybe a year. But it is also one that I'm familiar with, having implemented it in another community in Pennsylvania. And I'm really excited to be working with Enterprise Fleet Management. They have an excellent program and an excellent model, which we're pleased to introduce to you tonight. This is a program by which we can get a really strong management handle on our expenses for fleet management and maintenance. The overall goal being to reduce the age of our fleet and take the savings from costly repairs of an old fleet and reinvest them into newer vehicles on a lease basis, which then we can turn around and sell and rotate out and keep putting the money back into the fleet, rather than just spending it on repairs. That way, we'll have a newer, younger fleet that looks great. And Mr. Davis is here to give you the, the a more illustrative version of that explanation.
Yep.
Mr. Davis, it's a pleasure having you as a presenter at our meeting. You were so anxious, you even showed up at 6 o'clock, so thank you so much. And then you had to wait an hour and a half for us, so congratulations again, but we're anxious to hear your presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the time. Little background on me. My name is Rob Davis. I've been with Enterprise approaching 10 years at this point. I have started the commercial truck division in New England, as well as now on to the fleet side of the business. We have been around in the government space for quite some time at this point. And I'll try to keep this as high level as possible. I know I don't have too much time here, but ultimately, like Ben said, our goal is to really reduce costs while also implementing a younger and more controlled and sustainable fleet. And we do that in a couple ways, and I'm not sure if I can share my screen here, but can you see it okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So first, I just wanted to put up the profile slide, and you know, it's pretty eye-opening to take a look at where the fleet is today. And on this profile slide here, we are excluding the police vehicles for this point in time. However, we are capable of handing them, handling them. But ultimately, you'll see in the bottom left there in that red box that the majority of your vehicles are now older than 10 years old. And with that, you know, you're going to see a few things. Those cost of repairs, your operating expenses are really going to start spiking. You're going to have some of those safety concerns, as well as a lot of downtime and soft costs that are coming into play. To take a couple steps back, our leasing program, you know, I was always raised to identify leasing as a bad thing. In this context, it's not your traditional dealership leasing. It's open-ended equity. And so what that means is essentially, we are going to go out and find these vehicles for you and order them at factory cost. And we are going to then lease and finance them down to residual book value. Knowing that government, we can purchase these vehicles at such a low price, and we can sell them at a pretty good price in the secondary market based off our resale structure and network. We're not going to reduce the book value all the way down to zero, however, leave a remaining balance on there. Knowing that at the end of the life of the vehicle, we can essentially sell it for more, you're going to have equity built up into it. So just for example, say if we buy a vehicle for $20,000 on your behalf, we might finance that vehicle over five years down to $5,000, knowing that at the end of the five years there, we can then sell it for 10. That means there's now a delta of that 10 and 5, meaning that you have now made $5,000 on that vehicle. And you can then roll that equity to the next vehicle coming in. And Kimberly, I think I saw your hand go up there.
Yeah, if I can just make sure I understand, if it's $20,000, we're going to finance $15,000 of it. And then at the end, we'll sell it to pay the rest off and get any growth.
Correct. So we'll sell it on your behalf, and we handle everything. And that's part of our value right there, is that we're capable of going out and getting 10 to 12% over the black book value index. We're not going to just list these at auction, knowing that you do lose a decent amount of value there. And we're going to go and sell them back through our network. So part of that, too, is we come on as a partner. We're not just a vendor. From when we order these vehicles, we're going to be making recommendations, thinking about the bottom line in five years, three, four, or five years down the road. So just, you know, a couple meetings ago with Ben and Lisa and Kevin and Raina, you know, we were looking and saying, okay, there are a couple Ford Escapes that could be going into the town. However, we might bring up to the point, why don't we look at Toyota RAV4s, knowing that those total costs of ownerships of the vehicles, they're actually less and they're more affordable. When we look at what you're able to buy them for, what you're able to resell them for, and the maintenance costs in between. So we're always going to be presenting the options. At the end of the day, it's your say. We're more there as consultants and really advising, looking to really put that proactive system into place. You know, we talked about the benefits there before, but again, increase in safety, employee morale, town You know, we talked about the benefits there before, but again, increase in safety, employee morale, town image is a big thing. Um, and above all else, bringing those costs down. And you know, another thing too is, we're going to always be taking into consideration your budget. Um, you're going to be given a dedicated account manager and account fleet coordinator that will be meeting with you multiple times a year. And we can be very flexible and fluid and say, okay, we have X amount of dollars to work with this year. Here's a good plan. You know, this is what the secondary market is looking right, like right now for these specific vehicles. We suggest you sell these. One of the big benefits of the open equity leasing is that at any time you can sell these vehicles and there's no penalty to get out of them early. Um, we understand that different applications come up where you might not need a vehicle anymore for what it was once used for. And we can then go and sell that on your behalf and bring the proper vehicle into play. Any questions at this point or anything can go into more detail on?
I, I have a question. Um, but this is, my question is actually either for Mr. Marshant or if he wants to have um, uh, Kevin or, or um, Director Blumenthal answer. So this, this is totally different than what we've done in the past because we've managed this individually, correct? We've never done anything like this type of consulting or fleet management before, correct?
That's correct.
And so can, can you just comment a little bit? Is this, um, I see a number of different uh, in the opening remarks, there were a number of different partners that are that are on this, that are in the materials, um, partners that are working now, and then some people that we can talk to um, for recommendations. Is this kind of, are we, are we way behind here? Is this, people are just starting to onboard? How, how does this kind of just work generally across different areas?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we've been around for quite some time, where we have at this point over sixteen hundred partners, uh, municipal partners. In New England, it's relatively new. Um, however, you know, we are, say, partnered with Providence Housing Authority, Worcester Housing Authority. Um, City of New and just came onboard recently in Massachusetts, City of Manchester, New Hampshire. And across the states, there's plenty out there that we could provide, you know, significant references for. One thing that, you know, when you ask, are we behind, in some contexts, you know, when we're looking at this coming year with all the shortages out there, it's a pretty opportune time to implement a program like this. Um, we're realizing that a lot of government partners are reaching out to us this year more than ever to make sure we navigate efficiently as we come out of the pandemic and the shortages we've seen.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions for members of the council? Mr. Shockley?
Uh, just curious, are we looking into getting any hybrid vehicles? I noticed you put that in your slide.
Yeah, so at this point in time, um, with how behind the fleet is and the deficits and, you know, costs right there. It's not our biggest focus. Down the road, however, you know, by going into a program like this where we're going to be reducing the costs and moving into a more positive equity standpoint, the fleet. You're going to be able to adapt that much quicker. Um, it's just a very real thing that the EV and the PHEV space is coming. And this will, if anything, put you in that better position to adapt once we get there. At this point in time, our biggest focus is just getting that fleet into a healthy standpoint and reducing costs as fast as we can. Um, we understand that there's some urgent needs out there and looking across the fleet, you know, we've done extensive research and homework into all the vehicles that are operating today. And I mean, there's even vehicles at this point that are just sitting where you're paying those insurance premiums for. There's a lot of places that you can really tighten up. Um, and just to go into, without going to it too much, but conservatively, you know, we're going to be looking to reduce your costs by at least twelve thousand dollars a year. And that also, we're going to be reducing the average age of the fleet. Um, you know, from the fifteen year cycle down to four and a quarter and bringing essentially the vehicles to five years or less. Um, and we then, we also know that there's some heavy duty equipment out there that would not be cycling quite as frequently.
Any, any other questions by members of the council? Okay, um, I, I would like to ask a couple of questions, please. Um, I know you said it's not going to include the police vehicles, but is this going to include all of the other vehicles that the town owns?
Yeah, uh, yes, so our naturally is at all light duty vehicles and we really operate all up to the twenty six thousand GBW or the medium duty vehicles.
Yep.
Um, so for instance, you know, I'm working with Kevin on a couple specialty trucks that he needs. We can satisfy and take care of those. Um, you know, you'll see, our vehicles are on the road everywhere. You might not know that they are ours because they'll be branded wrapped in company logos, city town logos and fitted up with equipment. So we can have all these vehicles outfitted however you need and utilize the vendors you're using today.
And, and this does not include then the sanitation trucks, is that correct?
Does not.
Okay, and the next question is, um, what is the cost to us to use your service?
Yeah, great question. And so all that's included on this model. So we are vetted out and partnered through Sourcewell, the procurement service there. And ultimately, our management fee is point one of a percent on the capitalized cost of a vehicle. Say for instance, if we um, get a vehicle for you that's twenty thousand dollars, that comes to twenty dollars per month on that vehicle to manage. Um, and that is all factored into our modeling and all the prices that are built out here. The only other cost is when we sell the vehicles on your behalf. We charge a four hundred dollar fee. Um, and that is us taking care of everything, but you'll see those gains make up for that significantly on what we're able to get in the secondary market.
Okay, now, I, I understand that there would be reduced cost of maintenance because we're tuning over the fleet, but what happens if um, we have one of these um uh, vehicles that's in this plan, um, and they need some maintenance? We're responsible for the day-to-day maintenance, is that correct?
Yeah, great question. So, it's up to you. We do have full maintenance um, programs where you could utilize all the local vendors, but at this point in time, we've found it best where you have the onsite mechanics and shop to just service in-house. And you got to figure that by reducing the age so greatly and knowing that government vehicles go that much less as far as mileage goes. You're going to pretty much be handling oil changes and filters, um, a couple tires here and there, but that's really going to be the bulk of it. And that will also let you focus on some of that heavier duty equipment that needs to be out there on the road.
Hmm, so how do you go about assessing uh, when a vehicle is ready to be turned in, so to speak, and looking at the condition of it?
Yeah, great question. Um, so when we meet with you multiple times a year there, we're going to be always analyzing the fleet and seeing what we're getting out in the secondary market. But we'll essentially always put vehicles on a certain schedule and the program again is very fluid in that no, or for instance, the police vehicles, we know they have high idle hours and they just really don't shut off, they're constantly going. We typically put those on two to three year cycles. Where we'll say, all right, some of the admin vehicles in the town going five to seven thousand miles a year, we're going to put those on five-year terms. Um, however, there's instances where we do get very creative. Say for instance, you might have a half ton pickup truck that's being used more on the admin side. We know that uh, piggybacking off those government incentive incentives. We can go out there and purchase that vehicle for such a low price that after operating it for a full year, we can go to the secondary market and sell it for more than we purchased it for. Where you're essentially reducing that vehicle from the budget or eliminating it from the budget.
Thank you. We have a question from uh, Mrs. Lima.
Yep.
Um, I, I apologize if this is an obvious question, uh, but so for those trucks that we use for plowing, it, I, the plow is the town's issue to put on these new trucks, do are we, are we going to be saving the plows we already have or like, how will that work for trucks that are plowing?
Yeah, great question. Um, so it, it'd be both ways. If you need a new plow and the plow that you have today is just done and damaged and it can't go onto a new truck. We'll have that outfitted and brought directly to you and included in the capitalized price. Or, you know, if you can rotate and get multiple life cycles out of it, then we would definitely recommend, you know, holding on to it and putting on the new vehicle that comes in. Um, it's a very common thing. We outfit a lot of cargo vans where, you know, we put them on five-year leases, but we'll move all the bins and shelving from the first van to the second and span that equipment over ten years. And we'll always break down that modeling for you and, you know, show you how that breaks down as far as cost benefit. Um, and again, at the end of the day, it's your say and your call. But we can at least model it out for you in analysis.
Okay, other questions from members of the council? I have one more question for you, please. Um, this is just for the town vehicles. Uh, the school department also owns vehicles. Um, if in some way we were able to partner with the school and bring more vehicles into this fleet management program, would there be any additional savings that we would have?
Yes and no. Um, it wouldn't change our pricing structure at all, but the goal is that, I mean, by more vehicles being on this program, yes, we'd be bringing those costs down. I have been speaking with the school as well, um, knowing that they're on, you know, somewhat of a separate budget there. Um, at this time, you know, we're very focused on the town, given some of those very urgent needs out there. And also knowing, you know, with the upcoming shortages, that this is a program that would be beneficial to move as quick as possible.
Okay, thank you. And we have a question from Mrs. Shockley.
Yeah. Yes, um, if you would go back to the slide with the fleet planning analysis, it was just something I didn't understand. Um, so you on the top have current fleet, current cycle, current maintenance, and then maintenance cents per mile.
Yep.
And then where you do the proposed, you do price per gallon. So, why aren't you comparing apples to apples there?
Yeah, absolutely. And so with the price per gallon, so right now we're saying, we're looking at the forty-five vehicles based off your town list. Current cycle noticing, just by averaging out your purchasing patterns, we're taking right off here. Um, based off the makeup of the fleet and all the model years that you have. So that's where we're getting the current cycle. Current maintenance, we went conservative since you didn't have the exact amount. We based it off more of the budget and backed into this number. Also, I will tell you that the government standard average is twenty-two cents per mile. In this case, we're going at sixteen and a half. Um, annual mileage, knowing that Coventry is the largest town geographically in Rhode Island, we put it above the seventy-five hundred. And we also pulled a lot of miles on the fleet. Current miles per gallon, that ten, that's knowing that the fleet is aged. Um, and that fuel degradation is a very real thing. A, you have vehicles that were built back in two thousand and they've been running for much longer, becoming less efficient. Proposed cycle, we're saying that, you know, there's probably an underutilized vehicle and I know Justin Parks and Rec alone talking to Raina. There's a vehicle there that we could do away with, um, bringing in some new ones. That's why the proposed cycle goes down to forty-four, eliminating one. Proposed cycle, um, saying that we're going to be reducing the average time to bring in new vehicles every four years and change. Proposed maintenance, just knowing that, you know, everything's going to be pretty much moved to oil changes, filters. That's going to drop down to forty-four dollars and change. And price per gallon, that's just a standard, that's looking, just in general, um, that's on both your side and our side as well. Um, we put it there, we know it's about three dollars today. Which would, essentially that's given more credibility to this model. Um, I've also been working with the town for quite some time, so the fuel is a bit lower at that point. But that two dollars, that's just a standard price um, on both sides of this.
Okay, you're using it on both sides.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Marshant, do you have any final comments you'd like to make about this program, please?
Uh, I think this is a great program that the council could, should, the town council should very seriously consider. And I've implemented it before and it works very well. And I look forward to the cost savings that we'll be able to achieve and free up our mechanics to work on the heavier equipment that really needs their attention and um, this will put the town in a very good position. Uh, I'm really excited about the ten-year savings and with how conservative I know Mr. Davis has been, I expect that to, number to go way up.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is on, on an agenda, um, C four is just a presentation. What would be the next steps for the council?
Uh, we have a draft agreement uh, for the town council to approve at the next meeting if you're interested.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shockley?
Uh, sorry, just a couple more questions. Um, so, Mr. Davis, you were mentioning that in other parts of the country, this has been going on for a while. Um, so can I ask when this program started and just because I'm looking to see how realistic these savings are, you know, other places have already been doing them. How many years in are they and still seeing these savings?
Oh yeah, we have, you know, many government partners that are over ten years at this point, for sure. Um, part of the reason locally that it hasn't been as implemented as other parts of the country is due to our local, I guess, management. Um, you know, they've been focused on commercial for quite some time and uh, for a while, we also were not doing the RVs or the police fleet, that deterred a lot of towns and cities. Um, and so for that reason, we just never focused on it too much. But at this point, it's a big focus and we're having a ton of success with it and even some of the towns and cities that have only been implemented for three years have seen those drastic changes and savings. Um, so we're publishing case studies all the time from some of our partners that have been fully implemented and have seen the cycles.
Is there any way you could send those, some of those case studies along before we're approving the contract?
Yeah.
Be great, thank you.
Send those over tonight.
Thank you. A fair note, final questions? I'll take one last look. Okay, Mr. Davis, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, and if we have any more questions, we'll forward them to our town manager for responses from you, okay?
Very good. Thank you very much, all. I appreciate it. And my contact information is on that synopsis that was sent over if you do have any direct questions.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dave.
Bye.
Um, Madam Clark, would you please read agenda um, five, please?
Russell Crossman, Director of Planning and Zoning Quarterly Report on Planning and Zoning Department.
Mr. Crossman, welcome.
Thank you, Council President. How are you this evening?
We're very well because um, we have you back with us. Um, you gave a such a sterling presentation the first time you were here that the council, Mr. Mr. Blank specifically requested you do a quarterly report, so that's why you're here and you'll be here in September again and December, so um, we're looking forward to it and I hope you're looking forward to talking with us too.
I am.
This is just a brief update this evening, so we're looking forward to the presentation.
Yeah, yes, Council President. It'll be much briefer than last presentation, which was quite lengthy. I, um, this one, basically what I'm doing is I'm updating the council on the new projects that have come before the town um, since the last time we have met. And so, uh, I'm going to, if I may, I'm going to share the screen right now and let me uh, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and if anybody has any questions, they just please jump right in, ask, otherwise I'm just going to scroll through them. Um, the first one. And remember, I don't name these projects, they're picked by the developers and the property owners. It's called Moo Cow Solar. This is a proposed four point five megawatt ground-mounted solar installation. It's at two four four six Victory Highway, uh, which is in uh, Council District One. This lot right here that you're seeing in red is a hundred and nine acre parcel. It's across the street from, um, as Mrs. Crossman would say, the Sawmill Farm that has the best town, uh, best corn in town. Um, so it's right across the street from Saw Farm. They showed up for a pre-application. Um, there has been no public hearing yet, but um, they, they wanted to get the ball rolling. But, um, they, they wanted to get the ball rolling. I have this picture here, basically what you're looking at here. I know it's very difficult to see. Um, let me see if I can try to blow that up a little. Um. This would be the size of the solar array they were looking to put in. Um, again, it's a hundred and nine acre parcel, but I believe they're only using approximately fifteen acres. Um, which is all they're allowed to use, uh, by code, uh, per, per zoning ordinance. So, um, that is the first one I have this evening. Does anybody have any questions on that one?
That near the veterinarian, um, business?
Well, yes, the veterinarian business is actually in West Greenwich. I would say it's two parcels down.
Okay, thank you.
There and you, it doesn't show up on this photograph, but there is another solar farm here in West Greenwich. Um, that has been installed, uh, recently.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, this next one.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure, please.
Um, so is this open land already or is this forest? What is this land like?
Okay, it's, it's two parcels. Um, this back parcel is approximately, I'm gonna say it's sixty-five acres. It's vacant land. Lot of wetlands, uh, never been used, never been touched. This front piece is a forty acre parcel. It has. A very old house on it. The house, I believe, is circa eighteen hundred. Um, and that is all that is on the property. I don't know that anybody's lived there in a many years.
Mrs., uh, Ms. Ledwood.
Thank you, President Dixon. Uh, so, Mr. Crossman, can you just confirm, um, I think you said this has not come in yet, but will be coming up at a. At one of the next planning meetings?
Yeah, they came for a pre-application. Um. What I, what I said was they haven't come for a public hearing yet, so the public has not had a chance to speak and vet this project yet. They just came for a pre-application. Basically what a pre-application is, is just. They come in with a concept, really no engineering plans. They, they talk to the board for ten minutes and they explain what they're looking to do. Um, but they will be coming back. Uh, this project will require. Two public hearings, if they get that far, two public hearings before our planning commission, and they will also need a special use permit from the zoning board of review.
Mr. Crossman, I have a question. Since it's so close to the West Greenwich border, when you notify. Uh, residents in a particular area of a hearing, do you also notify residents who are in the adjacent community or just in Coventry itself?
Uh, no, that's an excellent question. Thank you for asking it. No. What they do is they take a radius around the entire property and all those people will be notified irregardless of what community they live in.
Okay.
So all the residents who live in West Greenwich who are within that radius will get notified. As well as because it abuts the town of West Greenwich. Um, a certified letter was also be sent to the town hall to advise them, so if the town manager or any department staff. Wanted to comment, they would be able to also comment.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? And the next one, Mr. Crossman?
Okay, the next one, it's a, uh, the town, it's called the Town Farm Road Subdivision. It is a small, it's a proposed two lot minor subdivision. This is a really nice piece of land. It's on Town Farm Road. It abuts, this is the northern part of Johnson's Pond. Um, they're looking, it's in the, it's in the three acre zone. It's also in Council District One. They're basically just looking to split the lot in two and put two single family homes on this project. Um, one thing that I'm doing differently now, uh, at the request of Councilman LeBlanc, Councilman LeBlanc is a numbers person. He wanted to see numbers last time when he, um, when asked me when I came back if I could present some numbers. So as part of the projects, what I did was I basically, uh, I went and, um. I'm sharing some numbers with you. This one here, this two lot subdivision. Uh, all residential projects have to submit a fiscal impact statement. This is in red because this project. The town will hypothetically lose five thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents a year with this project. Um, I'll explain to you why you're like, why would we lose money? Basically what it is, because it's only two lots. The taxes that will be seen by these two lots are not higher than the cost to educate the children. Uh, because these will, these will be beautiful, probably three to four bedroom homes. They have the potential. For, you know, average of two and a half to three children each. Um, there's a dollar value associated with educating those children. And the dollar value of educating them outweighs the number of the taxes that would be, um. Garned from the town for this purposes. So that's why there is a negative, um. Negative number there on the fiscal impact. Uh, it will see fair share development fees, uh, in the total of fifty-eight, fifty-four. And, um, there will be no sewer assessment because these will be on OWTS. Any questions on that one?
Ledwood?
So maybe, maybe we can chat about what numbers get presented here because I. I have a couple of questions. Are, we're just assuming that people are going to have children in these homes. Is that? I.
Yes.
It just feels like we've made a pretty serious set of assumptions to show that there's a negative impact. So for example, I, I moved to Coventry and I paid taxes for four years and now my children are in school. So I, I just want to make sure that we're. Before we show negative numbers to the community that we, we take into account that anyone could possibly move in here, right?
Oh, absolutely. It's just that we, we require that. It, it's all based on national averages. Taken out of, uh, American Planning Association publications and guides. While, while the local numbers come from our town folks, but the national average is based upon the number of children. It's based on studies and, and just that national averages. So that's all it is. If less, it could be more. Um, so, um, if. I don't have to show the numbers anymore, but again, um, I just.
You're not, you're not gonna win, Mr. Crossman, because they, they, we asked for the numbers and then we don't like the numbers and, you know, so I'm just. Um, I'm just being a little cheeky now because the.
No, that's fine.
I don't think, I don't think necessarily we can say that, that it's a, it's a definite loss to the town because families with children might move in.
Right, and what I'll know you later on, there is a couple other project, uh, one other project, I'm pretty sure. I'd like to show you on a slide where that project has been restricted to two bedroom homes. So the number of children is much less. And you'll see a much greater impact to the town on that project because of the two bedroom restriction. Um, so we'll, I can show you that as we proceed.
Okay.
Need to move along a little bit, but, uh, thank you for the question, Ms. Ledwood. Okay, Mr. Crossman, next.
Okay, the next one is, um, the Calventown Road Subdivision. This is in Council District Two. This, uh, is a proposed eighteen lot residential subdivision. They came before the planning commission. They, uh, received master plan approval. This was the site where the former, um, where they were looking to put a solar farm. Uh, that did not work out and was denied by the planning commission. So basically, I just wanna, uh, I'll look here. We have the fiscal impacts. This is showing a net of thirty-seven, two ninety-four. The fair share development fees that would be seen are ninety-nine thousand five hundred and eighteen. And, um, sewer assessments, there would be none because all of these proposed eighteen homes would be on OWTS. So, um. Next, I have, uh, this is Black Rock Ridge. This is, um, over at four oh one Black Rock Road. There is an existing home there now. It's a three lot minor subdivision. Without a street creation. Um, don't look at the negative number there in red, you know, um. Uh, but, uh, this is a three lot. There is, uh, the fiscal impact shows that was submitted to me by the applicant. Shows a negative number of approximately sixteen grand. And the fair share development fees would be eleven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Again, there would be no sewer assessment on this one because these would also be on septic. Uh, next, uh, the, uh, oh, by the way, and I, that was in Council District Three. That was in, uh, Councilman LeBlanc's district. This one is also. In Council District Three. It's the I Canelli Platt. This is a two lot minor subdivision. You, you've got a lot that's big enough, has a single family home on it. But this, uh, developer, uh, this owner of the property has now decided he doesn't need all this land and he's gonna subdivide it into two lots. Um, this. Uh, it's showing and, uh, also showing a negative fiscal impact. And the fair share development fees would be the fifty-eight, fifty-four for the one new proposed lot. This next one is a proposed retail store. This is in, um. Councilwoman Lima's district in District Four. This is the old, um. Zen Garden Restaurant over on, um, once, uh, four ninety-five Washington Street. Uh, it's been empty now for quite a few years. Um, there's what the parcel looks like. We've, I've been approached. We've got a proposed. Retail developer. It's a national chain. They're not allowed to. Tell us exactly what it is yet, but they're looking to put a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot. Um, retail, uh, building in there with associated parking and, um. That's they've, uh, they'll be coming for master plan approval this month. They came for a pre-op last month. Next, we have, this is another commercial.
Yes. At what point in the process do we get to know what the store is going to be?
Well, that's a good question. I'm gonna bring that up next week because I think.
If it's another dollar store, I'm out, but if it's.
You know. Well, let me just put it, let. Councilwoman, if I may, I wanted to know what it was. They wouldn't tell me. So I took this square footage, this ten hot, ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet. And I Google searched ten thousand six hundred and forty-six square foot prototypical building. And it took me right to a national retailer's website with a picture of what the building would look like. So let's put it this way, you are right there in the ballpark. So.
Okay.
Um, is there any more questions on that one? Okay.
It would be good to see that land used in some way because that is becoming an eyesore now. Yes.
I agree. We've had some zoning violations. They also own the parking lot in the rear. And we've had some zoning violations that we had to issue them for cleanup and everything. So, um, yes, it, it would be good to, uh, clean up that piece of property. The next one, this is the Huntley Building. This is a small four thousand square foot commercial storage building. This piece of property is on Arizona Street. It came before the council. Uh, this is in Council District Four. It came before the council for a zone change for this lot sixty-eight. Which was zoned residential, but this lot sixty-seven was zoned general business. So, uh, now that it's all zoned, um, general business, they're looking to put this, uh, four thousand square foot commercial building on the property. Um, next, I believe we talked about this last time. This was the Sunset Sit and Ti- uh, Sunset Tint and Sign. Um, they are currently located across the street, um, from the, uh, next door to, um, Judge Capaldi's Law Firm. That's where they're currently located. They're looking to build a brand new building across the street. On what is the vacant parking lot that used to belong to Merrill's Motors.
Wow.
They received development plan review, um, and they're, uh, went to the zoning board. They got that approval. And basically, that's just a picture of what they're proposing the building to look like. And here's the proposed layout, um, of that, uh, building. And again, that's in Council District Four. Next, uh, Tallwood Estates Residential, uh, Council District Five. This was the proposed sixty-two unit condominium development. They appeared last month for a preliminary plan. Um, I believe we discussed this last time in February, but I brought this back on because I wanted to show you the numbers. To talk about the fiscal impact of this new residential. Now, because these are limited to two bedrooms. Uh, their fiscal impact shows three hundred and nineteen thousand and twenty-three dollars. Because they will be generating all that tax money from the sixty-two units. It's also private roads, no trash pickup, no, uh, no plowing. But with the two bedrooms, it drops down the number of schoolchildren on average dramatically. So that's why you're looking at a, uh, potential fiscal impact of three hundred and nineteen thousand. The fair share development fees for this project are estimated to be three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And again, there's no sewer assessment for this one because, uh, they will all be on, uh, OWTS. Yes.
Is there any, um, age minimums to this housing or could people of any age move here?
No, the developer chose not to do any age restrictions, so anybody could move in. But what we found is because it's only two bedrooms. It, it kind of gears itself towards the fifty-five and older community without making it fifty-five and older. Granted, you could have a husband and wife, um, with maybe one, two small children, but a two bedroom home doesn't. A two bedroom condominium doesn't tend to lead itself towards that.
The only reason I ask is, does it change the fiscal impact if we, the same way we assume people might have two and a half children? We assume that an older population is moving into these, um, units and therefore will have their taxes frozen relatively soon.
That's a good point. I did not even. I didn't even think anything about frozen taxes and fifty-five and older, but I would have to think. If somebody bought one and they've lived in town for more than five years. I would have to think that would affect, um, the fiscal impact, yes.
May I also ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so Director Crossman, um. Generally, how do some of these projects work? Like here you had mentioned. I think you said they're not going to be, um, having. Uh, waste removal or things like that, so I'm assuming it's some sort of association fee or something that they'll have. So for these locations that come in and say, okay, we don't want. We don't want DPW services. We don't want snow removal and garbage. How early or late in the process do you know about this, um, for this particular type of?
Well, for this particular project, what they did, um. They received master plan approval, which is the first stage of approval where a vote was taken. And at that same time, they appeared before the town council for a zone change. Because what, because it's a condominium, it's still one entire parcel with sixty-two dwelling units on it. The only way to get that approved is there's two ways. You can either go before the town council. And ask for a zone change to a planned unit development, or you could go appear before the, uh, zoning board of review. And you could ask for approval from them also to put, to make, to make a multifamily development, i.e. a condo development on one parcel. So this developer at that time chose to, uh, at master plan stage, he let us know and he advised the council when he appeared. I believe Councilwoman Dixon would have been the only person, I think, on the council when they appeared. Uh, it would have been sometime probably in maybe late two thousand nineteen. They, um, they spelled it all out for the town council at that point. That, uh, there would be private roads, no trash pickup, no, no snow plowing, so. It, it's, it's spelt out at the master plan stage and right after it was explained to the town council.
Okay, so, um, the reason I'm asking is because I, I just want to make sure I understand as these come up, in case this comes in front of us or just for considerations because. I did see lots of chatter over the last week about, you know, what people think about what they're getting for their value in dollar here in Coventry. And when they say they live in a neighborhood like this, um, that they don't use any town services. Um, you can, you can imagine which way they're voting in our annual budget, so. Um, it's just something for me to be aware of to, to understand when in the process this is announced, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, President Dixon, if I may.
Oh, certainly, Mrs. Lima.
It's actually interesting that, um. Uh, Councilmember Ledwood brings up that point because I'm actually starting to hear some. Uh, rumblings from the folks who live in the, um, community that's. Behind the Walmarts or next to the Walmart in center of New England. There's some folks in that, uh. Uh, development there that I think is fifty-five plus or a certain portion has to be fifty-five plus. Saying, you know, kind of coming to the realization of. Why am I paying full on taxes when I don't use any of the town services or I don't have access to, or whatever the case may be? I specifically got a message from a resident there and they also came to the meet and greet back in May and made the same point to me, so. Um, definitely something to consider and I would second, uh, Councilmember Ledwood's point there.
I would also mention that members from the center of New England residential area have come before the council several times, have also sent emails. Um, and they understand, they, they should understand that when they signed. Um and they understand, they they should understand that when they signed. To be part of that condo, they were made aware of the condo fees and also made aware that they were not going to receive. Plowing and trash pickup. However, when people say that they're receiving no services. Um I'd like to remind people that there are many services that townspeople do receive. Um and people tend to say, well, I don't get trash, I don't get plowing, and I get no services, but there are many services. Uh there's the senior center, the res- resource center, there's the library, uh there are planning and development. Um and like, I said, the library, but um there are lots of things that people do receive. And they don't necessarily think of that when they think about what they're not getting. But there is a big package of benefits that people do receive as members of the community, bike paths. Um access to Johnson's Pond, et cetera. So I like to try to remind people that. There's a lot to offer in Coventry and yes, part of your condo association is. The understanding that you're not going to get these particular services because that's how the developer has set it up with the town. Any other comments?
That's it, Council President. I only had nine new projects here this evening.
Well, that must have kept you busy since the last time. Um we're looking forward to um having you back again uh for another quarterly report. These have been very useful. Very graphic, easy for us to understand. Uh any final comments by any members of the council?
I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Um so yes, thank you for this. It's very helpful. Um first of all, you mentioned on the first project that that's just in the pre. Um application stage. So are the rest of these, the rest of these projects are still in planning as well, correct? They they haven't been fully approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Um can I ask if something is zoned for a project? Can we say no?
Yes, you can. You always have the right to say no. Uh the 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 Planning Commission or the Zoning Board always has to. They just have to back up their answer. And the reason why um. You know, i- it probably, you know, it it probably goes to not conforming with the comprehensive plan. And adversely affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the neighboring public. Uh and that's probably what they'll use in their reason. But um. Yes, they could.
I was curious. I wasn't positive on that, um and I just wanted to get some clarity, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Crossman. Any other comments, members of the council would like to ask? Okay, thank you so much. Madam. Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to Agenda D one. Would you please read the item?
Tax assesses additions and abatements for March and April of two thousand twenty-one.
Ms. Martini.
Hello, I'm here. I apologize, I got no camera on.
Okay, uh this is in reference to pages fifteen to eighteen in our packet. Um any particular comments you'd like to make about this report this evening?
Nope, I didn't know if you had any questions. We had the uh abatement. In the amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents. And addition of nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Did you have questions?
Any questions by members of the council on this report? As I mentioned before, it's reference pages five fifteen to eighteen. Uh Ms. Ludwig.
Uh I do have uh one or two questions. Thank you, um Ms. Martini. So um on the abatement page. It's page sixteen of my packet. Um it lists one of the reasons as incorrect town. Um this is for A- uh Astro of New England. Is this, is this something that we sent out and they said, oh, no, this isn't for us? Like they're on the West Greenwich line or something or what? What's that reasoning?
Yes, I believe they are actually on industrial drive in Exeter. And we had built them in twenty fourteen. And then again, in twenty eighteen, we left have received at that time. The motor vehicles in the raw data with the wrong tax town from DMV. And nobody caught the mistake and then it happened again in twenty eighteen.
Okay. And then um. And then separately, I just have a general question. So um. If someone is. Uh a council member or a town employee. Is the same process followed for the abatement process when you're looking over um these numbers?
If it's an appeal, yes. Anybody, any taxpayer can can file an appeal.
I think those are all my questions.
Okay, any other questions by councilmen? Mrs. Shockley.
I just, I apologize. I just found it confusing on the receivables. It's the same three properties. For just a number of different years.
Yes, that is back taxing for. Um improperly acquiring uh the senior freeze. They have um. Yeah, they had business located at the house.
No, great. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I just was looking for a little clarity. Thank you.
You are no problem.
Okay, any other questions? Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution on page eighteen?
Be it resolved that additions, tax abatements, and additions for the. Month of March, April, two thousand twenty-one be hereby approved by the town council. Uh passed and adopted this fourteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-one.
I have a motion from a member of the council.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Ludwig and Mrs. Shockley. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The motion passes quarter zero. Thank you. Uh next item, D two, appointment to the planning uh commission. Um I'm gonna read this resolution. The resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, appointing members to the Planning Commission in accordance with ordinance number eight dash seventy-three dash. Zero 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 eight. Whereas ordinance number eight seventy-three zero 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 eight, section two requires that there be a planning commission consisting of nine members for five years staggered terms. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby appoints Chuck Smith. To for a five-year term of office expiring May first, twenty twenty-six. And I want to make a note that Mr. Smith is currently an employee of the Town of Coventry. He will not be able to stop this. Uh appointment on the commission until he officially retires in August of twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
My, my internet is buffering. I'm sorry. I, does, do you need a motion?
I need a second.
I can second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
President Dixon?
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes, yes, um I would like to abstain from this vote. I was not elected in part of the executive sessions to interview. Almost all of these candidates, so just out of fairness, all candidates I'd like to abstain from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. Uh Ms. Ametrono.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, three yays, no nays, one abstention. Uh the motion passes the appointment of Chuck Smith to the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, please read D three.
Appointment of three members to the Friends of Human Services.
Okay, I'll read the resolution as the Madam Clerk does not have the names. Resolution of the Town of Coventry. Uh excuse me, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, appointing three members to the Coventry Friends of Human Services. Whereas Resolution number thirty-four zero four twenty-three thirty-six. Establish the Coventry Friends of Human Services Advisory Board. Consisting of nine members to serve three years staggered terms of office. And whereas three terms of office expired on May first, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby reappoints the following people. Mr. Steve Glover. Member of the Senior Center. Uh Mrs. Florence Martinelli, a member of the elder population, and Miss Joan DeGregory. May I have a motion, please? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The motion passes. Uh congratulations to the members. Uh Mr. Glover, Mrs. Martinelli, and Mr. Greg- DeGregory. Uh item D four, Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item.
Coventry Sewer Subcommittee Recommendation for Approval of Sewer Tie-In Located at. Ten eighty-nine Main Street, Platte forty-five, Lot forty-one, requested by Timothy J. and Karen L. Burke.
This is a resolution on page twenty-one of your packet. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. Any questions concerning this resolution?
I'm President.
Yes. Mrs. Lima.
Yes, um. So this is gonna go slightly off the topic of the tie-in, but. Um I'm hoping we can reignite discussions and move. Things a little bit quicker when it comes to assessing and improving our sewer program. Um this was a, something I was reviewing in my packet and thankfully, Mr. Marshant forwarded me the. The other piece that goes along with this item, but um it's just, it's another example that I saw when I was just a citizen watching the council of. Um we're seeing a, a multi-unit property. Getting an assessment, I understand was originally assessed years, you know, in, in the recent few uh past, but. Um that's an assessment amount that's less than some of what. Single-family homes are seeing for sewers. So I I just, I just wanna, I I understand there's nothing we can do about it now. It's happened in the past, but it's just. Where it's recurringly frustrating to to see this. Um and I'm, you know, it's been months now since we had the workshop on sewers. And I'm just hoping that we can, we can actually get some work moving on improving the sewer sewer program so we stop just rubber stamping tie-ins. That we have determined we should be approving assessments on and I I just, I. I'm just a little frustrated and I'm hoping that we can move the sewer program forward and start making some real work there. On the program and and making improvements because.
I appreciate your your comments. Um as you rightfully noted, uh this is not a spot of the agenda. But alas, Mr. Marshant, please contact Mr. Wazika so that we could have an update on the progress of that program.
If if the update is still, I'm still collecting information, then we can save time. I I really wanna hear. That we're going to have a meeting with the Sewer Subcommittee or that this is a date that we plan to to address X. Um because in the last update we received uh two weeks ago, it was just that. Um Mr. Wazika attended these um the Westwork. Uh Sewer Committee meeting, so I really, if there's a going to be an update, I want to hear that. Oh, okay. Um well, I think Mr. Wazika's report was continuing to collect information was.
Let let us uh carry this over to Mr. Marshant. Could you please um contact Mr. Wazika so that we could have. An update on the progress of the program noting the comments that uh Mrs. Lima has made this evening, okay?
Yes, I believe he's on the agenda for the twenty-eighth for an update.
Yes, he is on the agenda for the twenty-eighth. So thank you very much. Uh I do have one question on page twenty-four. Uh it says the building type, the year, this building was built in eighteen twenty-eight. Is that correct? I mean, this makes it a star building in Coventry. Is that a typo or is this building that I'm looking at on page twenty-four actually one that was built in eighteen twenty-eight? I'm just curious.
That's the same information I have. Uh Russell, do you know?
I think this is the same information that we have when we approved it at the subcommittee level, so. Um is there a concern or just um just a?
It's just a matter of curiosity because I didn't realize that um. Some of these buildings that we have in town were so old, would be considered historic as far as our history is concerned. And I just didn't know if this was a typo or whether this was a legitimate number, so it was just a question that I had. Perhaps we can just uh check on that, Mr. Marshant. Okay, so we have a resolution, page twenty-one. Um we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, any more discussion? Or roll call, um Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution? It's on page twenty-one.
Whereas after examining the applications, designs, plans, and other submitted documentation. The Coventry Sewer Subcommittee has recommended approval for the sewer tie-in at ten eighty-nine Main Street, Platte forty-five, Lot forty-one. Whereas the applicant's design plans and other documentation comply with all federal, state. Coventry rules, regulations, ordinances, and the town engineers' review comments. Therefore, be it resolved, the Coventry Town Council approves the recommendation sewer tie-in. Application for Timothy J. and Karen L. Burke for ten eighty-nine Main Street, assesses Platte forty-five, Lot forty-one. Pass and adopt this fourteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Um Madam Clerk, do a roll call vote, please.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, for yays, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. Um item D five, Madam Clerk, please read the item.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to award bid in the amount of sixty dollars per hour and two dollars per mile fee. In addition to the hourly rate for any trip greater than a hundred miles. For bus transportation for recreation programs to First Student. Six hundred Vine Street, Cincinnati, Ohio.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Mrs. Shockley.
I just wanna confirm, just based on the two bids, so. Do they only charge two dollars for miles over one hundred?
Correct. So the, we have two bids that came in. Ocean State was two dollars flat, even if it was under a hundred miles. And First Student was only two dollars when it was above one hundred miles and all of our trips because of COVID are now within Rhode Island. So doing the math, First Student actually came out less.
Gotcha. That makes perfect sense. I just wanted to make sure because their hourly rate was um. Less and that wasn't quite clear, so.
Yeah, we put a spreadsheet together, make sure, and there's a minor difference, but there's still a difference.
Perfect, yes, because I was gonna ask about the, how many trips we have that go over a hundred miles too, so, right? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, Marcia, do you have any comments on this particular um. Agenda item?
Nothing really to add, but I wanna thank Mrs. Lima uh for uh bringing some questions up. Raina and I went back to the school district to see if there was an opportunity there to work with their bus bid. to work with their bus bid, to see if that would save us any money. And unfortunately, the way they structure their bid, they get the buses by the day. And so that really wouldn't work apples to apples for us, but we will look at doing a joint bid in the future to see if bundled together, we get a better deal.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments you'd like to make, Miss Womenzall?
Uh, no. I just, we looked into the company, and I actually spoke to their references and Jason Martin in County School District, and he highly recommends them as well.
Excellent. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the resolution on page twenty-nine.
Resolve, the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby affirms the award, the award of a contract to be, maybe even the wrong one, executed by the Town Manager with Article ten, Section ten point two-three of the Town of Charter for Bus Transportation for the seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two Recreation Program to First Student Incorporated, twenty Junior Street, West Warwick Island. The contractor will provide bus services and driver for the sum of sixty dollars per hour and two dollars per mile fee in addition to the hourly, hourly rate for any trip greater than one hundred miles. The contractor will provide all labor, fuel, repairs, and miscellaneous expenses related to the items awarded, passed and adopted this fourteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-one.
Um, Madam, from the council, may I have a motion?
We already had a motion, didn't we?
I don't believe this one.
Kim was the main motion, I was the second.
Okay, thank you. Did I fall asleep? I hope not. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. For yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Womenzall. Have a good evening. Item D six, Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to award bid in the amount of forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars for a two thousand and twenty-one Ford Transit one fifty full-size eight-passenger van to Flood Ford Narragansett, twenty-one Woodruff Avenue, Narragansett, Rhode Island.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Who, who made the motion?
Uh, Kim, I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we get maybe just a little background as a refresher here?
Yes.
Maybe.
Thank you, thank you. What happened is, uh, we, we had a van that was in an accident. It was a twenty seventeen van. It was our newest van. And it was totaled. So we went through the trust and we received a settlement, obviously not enough to purchase another van. So we looked at utilizing the settlement money and applying for a grant through the Office of Healthy Aging. Now, we had started this process in October of two thousand and twenty. Unfortunately, there were no bids initially, and then finally, all the way up until May, now, we were able to get a single bid from Flood Ford. And since that time has, you know, increased, gone forward, the, actually, this resolution should read a two thousand and twenty-two van and not a two thousand and twenty-one van. And they're actually going to do a spec build for us for a new van because the timeline has been since October of two thousand and twenty-two, very recently. So this resolution should read two thousand and twenty-two, a brand-new van. We utilize these vans to transport folks with developmental disabilities, to transport our seniors to shopping. We did that throughout COVID with some of our older vans. One of them's gonna need to get retired relatively soon. And the opportunity to get grant funds to supplement and purchase a new van is the reasoning behind tonight's resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions that anyone would like to ask Mr. Robulot about this request? Okay, I need a motion to amend the resolution so that.
Make a motion to amend?
From twenty?
Twenty twenty-two?
Yes, thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment to amend the resolution to change the year of the vehicle from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. For yeas, no nays, the amendment passes. I'll now read the resolution. Resolve, whereas the Town Council and the Town of Coventry hereby affirms the award of a contract to be executed by the Town Manager in accordance with Article ten, Section ten point twenty-three of the Town Charter for the per, per, purchase of two thousand and twenty-two Ford Transit one hundred fifty full-size eight-passenger van for the Town of Coventry Department of Human Services. Whereas the contract has been successfully awarded through the Town of Coventry designated bidding process to flood Ford twenty-one Woodruff Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-eight-two. Whereas the contractor will provide two thousand and twenty-two Ford Transit one hundred fifty full-size eight-passenger van at a cost of forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars. Funds for the purchase of this vehicle are nineteen thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars from insurance settlement following a human services van being totaled, and the balance of twenty-four thousand thirty-three dollars will be expended from grant funds received by the Coventry Department of Human Services from Rhode Island Office of Healthy Aging. May I have a motion?
Uh, we already have the motion. I think we just have to vote.
Uh, we have the motion on the amendment. Do we have the motion on the?
Yes. Did we do both, I think? Yeah, we did.
Made the motion, then amended the motion.
We amended the motion. I remember, I wrote a note on that. Okay, so we have made a motion on the resolution. All right. Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. For yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. Item D seven.
Ratification of ratification Council Resolution to set and establish the taxing resolution in authorization based on the approval of the FY two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Town Budget at the All-Day Referendum held on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Gorm, would you please speak to this agenda item?
Yes, I've reviewed it, and it's in proper form.
Would you explain for the members of the public who are watching this why we have this resolution?
Because the, um, the financial town meeting resulted in a, an adopted budget, and you have to implement a tax resolution under Section three point one-four of the Charter. Town Council has the power to tax, and they do the tax based on the, the money that was approved to be spent at the All-Day Referendum. And so this resolution is an exercise of the Town Council's power to tax.
Excellent. Uh, may I have a motion? The resolution is on page thirty-six to, uh, thirty-six to thirty-six to thirty-seven. Um, may I have a motion, please? Mrs. Lima?
Oh, you can get the motion, then I'll, I'll.
Okay, may I have, may I have a motion for the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Mrs. Lima?
So is that why we don't, and forgive me, I'm just new, i- is that why we don't list the figure that we actually listed on the, the ballot question itself? We only list the tax amount because this is a tax resolution? I just wanna understand.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not actually ratifying the budget, it's ratifying the, the tax?
Only the people of Coventry can ratify the budget. The Town Council can implement that budget by doing what this resolution does, which is levying the tax and doing it for equal monthly installments, uh, with a penalty if you pay late.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gorm, we, we read the agenda item. Do we need to read the entire resolution?
No, no.
Just, just asking. I wanna make sure we can, I'm sorry, tax people. All right. Anyway, additional discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The motion passes for for yeas, no nays, motion passes. Thank you. Item D eight, Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Resolution to rescind of the Town of Coventry's Emergency Declaration Order implemented by the Town Council.
Okay, Mr. Gorm, would you please speak to the significance of what we, what we would be doing this evening? Right now, we have an emergency declaration order that carries us through August first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, tell us what would be the impact of us um, removing this emergency declaration? You're muted. We're on mute.
I would say the most substantive effect is that it, it removes the President from having the ability to make decisions of an emergency nature, of course, on her own. If you read the original resolution, that's what it did. But other than that, I, you know, the consequences really are not that significant.
Okay. And I haven't made any decisions since this was placed on me, so I'm not gonna lose anything.
We're gonna be okay.
Yeah, so we are gonna be okay because there'll be many people behind us. Um, may I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a second?
A second, yeah.
Thank you, Kim. Um, any additional discussion? Roll call?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't see you. Mad, um, this, this line work.
So by rescinding the emergency declaration, when are we going to talk about in-person council meetings and the like? Is that next week?
Mr. Gorm, should we be discussing that as part of this resolution or next week, next meeting?
You can start talking about having in-person Town Council meetings, I think, anytime you want.
Okay, is it appropriate, since it's not directly listed on the agenda, to discuss it this evening, or so we have it as a separate agenda item on June twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, you're right, so. Well, it's being asked in the context of the emergency order, so yeah, we can start talking about that. Remember one, one thing. Our, our Town Council meetings are all broadcast anyway on the internet, so everyone who wants to watch can always watch. It's really just that we will be meeting as a group, and if people wanna come to the Town Hall and see the meeting, uh, live and in person, they can, but they also have the option of watching it from home.
But by rescinding the emergency declaration, are we saying that we must meet in person for the next session?
No, because I think that's a different order that was instituted. It was really just a, um, a modification of the Open Meetings Act that a lot, that was, uh, implemented through an emergency executive order of Governor, then Governor Romano, that gave us the ability to do Zoom meetings, notwithstanding the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Lima?
Yes, um, so um, I just wanted to, I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Gorm's point that people can still watch, but I just wanted to iterate. We assume that everybody has access to internet, and that's not always the case, so I just want people to remind people of that, that, you know, and we've, and, you know, we, of course, when we, if, if and when we do go back, we do have the hybrid option, but I just wanna remind folks that we take that for granted, and I had a handful of people I met going door-to-door that actually didn't have internet, uh, whether they chose to not have internet or they couldn't afford it, either one. Um, and then also just another note, um, if I feel like we should pay attention to House Bill fifty-eight ninety-one. I think there was a committee meeting today about that, but that was an, an act relating to state affairs and government and open meetings, so I'm assuming it had something to do with open meetings at our level. Um, so we might wanna follow that, or Mr. Gorm, if you know, we might wanna take a look at how that's moving along as session comes to a close.
We're looking at right now fifty-eight ninety-one?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima, uh, you, you did alert me to this bill, and I did look it up last evening, and I have put myself on notification for any changes and any meetings that are going to take place. Um, but it does actually amend the Open Meetings Act, and it would allow us to continue through July first, two thousand and twenty-three, actually offering Zoom meetings if we wish, or a hybrid model, or complete in-person as we used to.
So I'm looking at the page right now for the status report. It was heard in committee today, and sub-bay was held for further study. So nothing was, doesn't look like anything was approved at this time.
Okay. All right, if, if it is approved, it will allow us to have hybrid meetings, meaning we could have Zoom meetings, in-person meetings, a combination of, of the two. Ms. Shockley?
So I'm wondering, when you speak of this bill, so I know during this time, there have been meetings that have been taken from other places than Coventry, so would we have the ability as council members, and I believe we wouldn't because it's a state-level law, but to take, to be, be part of the meeting virtually?
Based on this bill, the answer is yes.
Right. And thank you for having looked at that, but at, at this point, without that bill going forward, all council members would have to be in person?
No, both council members do not have to be in person. Um, we can continue as we've been continuing, so I think that that would be a discussion on the twenty-eighth, whether we want to resume in-person meetings or not. I've done some research, and if we have in-person meetings, uh, then the council will follow the Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines for COVID, which states currently that those who are fully vaccinated do not have to wear a mask indoors. Those who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask indoors, or if they're outdoors, be three feet apart. I did speak to Mr., I did contact Mr. Marshon today, and I asked him that, um, if we were to have in-person meetings, and there were people who were not vaccinated, and perhaps they didn't wanna wear a mask, but we don't wanna really get into the point of asking people individually, are you vaccinated or not, we could separate the seats in the council chamber three feet apart so that there would be some social distancing. So those who are wearing masks, not vaccinated, wearing masks, could feel comfortable. And those who choose not to wear masks, but they're not vaccinated, at least they are sitting apart from other people. So we have a capacity of about sixty people if we follow those guidelines. So I, based on legal counsel, I also received from Mr. Docostino, um, if we just keep it open and say that we are gonna follow the guidelines for the Rhode Island Department of Health, that that would be a safe measure for us, because as they change, we just change, but we are always able as a local entity to make stricter rules if we wish. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and then in addition to that, if Okay, and then in addition to that, if we were to meet in person, uh, we would also continue to have Zoom meetings, we'd be allowed to have Zoom meetings, we've already spoken to our IT administrator, Mr. uh Horton, and he assures us that he has tested the system um and that we are able to have in-person meetings, continue with Zoom meetings, those who want to stay home and watch the meetings on Zoom, or there still would be the opportunity for people to look at the YouTube uh video that is immediately available after our meetings. So there are multiple options for us and for people who want to participate. Um, what we need to do is if we have a hybrid, based on this bill, if it passes, if we have a hybrid, and some of us may be in person and some might be Zoom, we just have to ensure that when we take attendance, we have to indicate the vehicle by which someone is attending the meeting.
So I'm just going to repeat my question because now I'm I'm unsure of the answer. If this bill doesn't pass, if it doesn't move out of committee, would we all have to be in person if we decide to rescind? If, like, if the council decides to be in person, does the whole council have to be in person?
It appears so.
Okay.
The other thing to bear in mind is um just council has its own internal rules, so food for thought. Uh, when you transition into having, let's say, let's say this bill passes, it it looks like it probably will, um, in one form or another. Usually with legislative bodies, there has to be consent of the membership, you know, to um have one member attend remotely. It's not typically rejected, but it does end up being up to the legislative body itself, the five of you, can one of you or two of you or three of you attend from without the council chamber? Do you understand what I'm saying? That's something that you too control, not just the general assembly.
So even if they say it's okay, we as a council can say?
I think you probably, you could make rules to make sure that in certain circumstances, um, people must attend. I can't think of any reason, but there probably could be one.
Okay. Any other questions on that? So uh we're ready to vote on um.
Just one more quick question.
Certainly.
Besides, besides our meeting on the twenty-eighth, when is our next meeting?
In July.
We are having a July meeting?
Yes, it's on our, it's on our posted schedule. We have one meeting in July and one in August. The council could always make a decision that they don't need a July meeting, but the rate at which we've been going, it seems likely that we would need a July meeting and also need an August meeting, and it's hard to know whether we might even need more than one meeting or not. But I do have everyone's vacation schedule, and I'm hoping that we can uh stay with the business um calendar that we have already voted on and approved. More questions? So we should vote now on lifting the emergency declaration order? That just simply says that I'm not able to make decisions uh myself, and that's fine with me, uh, we can vote on that, and then on the June twenty eighth, we can bring up and we can put as an agenda item um discussion of what we want to do about in-person or continuing on Zoom through the rest of the summer, and then start again, maybe in person in September, leave it up to you, and at that point, Mr. LeBlanc will be back, um, and he really should be part of that discussion.
I'm not going to be at the June twenty eighth meeting.
Um, could you attend by Zoom?
I'm similar to Mr. LeBlanc tonight, I will be on vacation with my family.
Okay. Well, um, let us know whether you want us to delay that decision until July. Okay, all right, um, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call vote for item D eight.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, for yes, no nays, with motion passes. Item E one, Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item.
Renewal of Avenue Contract Land Evidence System.
Thank you. Mr. Marshawn, would you please speak to this item?
Certainly, uh, the land evidence system is the um software and electronic and scanning platforms that the town clerk's office uses to uh conduct their business of vital records and and such, and um the this is a renewal, uh, they're very happy with the current vendor and the operations. With this renewal, they'll be getting all new machines, computers, scanners, uh, including in the vault, and we recommend that you approve it.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
E one, reference pages forty to fifty-five, you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, for yes, no nays, the motion passes. Um, item E one, Madam Clerk?
Review in consideration of the results of the June tenth, two thousand twenty-one all-day referendum on the FY twenty-one, twenty-two Town of Coventry budget, including discussion of next steps, if any.
We we put in next steps, if any, because we didn't know whether the budget would pass or not. Fortunately, the budget passed, but there are always next steps for everything that we do. Uh, I'm just going to give a very brief summary, uh, so that members of the public who um not with us will will hear, who who have not heard the news. Um, the council recommended budget was approved at the all-day referendum, June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, with a tax levy of two point nine nine percent. The total votes cast were two thousand six hundred sixty-six. Approve one four zero four, reject twelve sixty-two, with a difference of a hundred forty-two votes. Uh, I just would mention to you that at the last referendum, which was July sixteenth, twenty twenty, um, there were two thousand thirty-nine votes cast, so we actually only gained an additional thirty-two votes cast. Um, our goal was to greatly increase the number of people who voted, and the total was only thirty-two more, so that was a little disappointing.
What was the number in July?
The number July sixteen, twenty twenty, two thousand thirty-nine people voted.
So this time, two thousand six hundred sixty-six voted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait, that's, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that's not thirty-two, that's six hundred.
Yes, it is. What time is it?
I'm with you.
Wait, is it thirty-two or six hundred?
I don't have, I don't have my abacus with us, so I'm using my pencil. This time was two thousand six hundred sixty-six votes. The last time was two thousand thirty-nine votes, so that is a difference of six hundred thirty-two votes, so we were able to increase the number of people who voted. So that was all very good. Uh, first of all, this was a very big team effort. Like to thank our Vice President, Ms. Jennifer Ludwig. She took the reins, and she was the project manager, identifying a variety of uh strategies that we should use to increase voter support and to get out the votes, so I'd like to uh say thank you so much to Ms. Ludwig for all of the work she did in coordinating. Uh, there were a number of people on the school committee and the town council who uh put in a great deal of effort. I have been summarizing and working on a summary of all the things that have been done. Um, and I'm also going to get the voter count, which I don't have right now, just to sort of indicate uh what percentage of voters in each basic age category did vote, so we get some idea going forth uh for the next time we have to send people to a referendum, we have some idea of which part of the population is is going to the polls. Um, in the um summary that I have, I'll just mention some things. Uh, we had to determine what the messaging would be, and we decided it would be reasonable and responsible, and we used that on much of our messaging. Um, the town council should pride itself in the vote to shorten the ballot. Um, I think it was so much easier for people who went to the polls to see a shortened ballot, and the shortened ballot was also printed in the reminder, and hopefully that may have inspired people to go out and vote because it didn't look so complicated. Uh, so thank you. Um, Ms. Ludwig sponsored a a Breakfast with a Counselor. Um, we went on Classic Radio, the local radio station, interviewed um Mrs. Patno and me and um Jennifer, Superintendent Levis uh had a duo with Mr. Marshawn, and I believe that Mrs. Shockley was on Classic Radio, so we all had our chance to be stars on the radio. Um, we also had many code-red um notifications that went out. Uh, if you signed up for the telephone, I signed up for the telephone and email, so I got code reds in all kinds of places, and since my husband's phone and my phone ring at the same time, we were getting buzzed constantly. But thank you, Mr. Marshawn, for making that happen. Um, we also had an article in the Courier uh in support of the budget. Uh, we also put door hangers, uh, door hangers were ordered, um, Ms. Ludwig designed those, and we went out door to door and hung these door hangers out. Um, we also designed a flyer for the senior center, and that was published in the newsletter and also available as a handout. Uh, we had lawn signs, probably over a hundred lawn signs. Uh, we did get permission from legal counsel that we could put them on town property, and we removed them as quickly as possible. Some of them were removed before eight o'clock on Thursday evening, and the rest were removed on Friday morning, and as I go through town and I see more signs, I I pick them up, some of these were placed by individuals, not by us. Uh, we also had a meet and greet the uh town manager, and I think that was an opportunity for people to come and and meet some of us and to meet the town manager, and I think that all of these things work to uh helping people understand that we do want to be a very transparent, um, very accountable council. Um, we also had various meetings with the town council, we invited department heads to make presentations before the budget so that people could begin to understand better the role of the department heads in our town. Uh, we also had an ad in the reminder, uh, the school um had a YouTube video, which Mr. uh Superintendent Levis produced. He also used ListServe, List Serve to notify parents that a vote was going to take place. Um, we also had on the town website a banner, there was also a banner on the school website. Um, and so, and then, of course, many of us posted on social media, encouraging people to come out and vote, and also to come out and support the budget. So there were lots of efforts, um, and at some point, we need to look look at which of these efforts do we believe had the most value in uh getting the support out for the um budget. Um, I would like to thank every single member of the town council, people on the school committee for rallying in a very, very short period of time to bring up the vote and to um help us have a very successful uh campaign to get voter support so that we could at least provide basic services to our residents. Um, any other comments that members of the council would like to make? Ms. Ludwig?
Uh, thank you, President Dixon. One, one thing that um that I noticed um in terms of people coming out and asking questions and different things after seeing the the budget passed, all of the information that we had put out in terms of what the money would be going towards while we made certain decisions, the, basically, all the information that went into this budget has been available for months. And so if anyone needs that, um, you know, specific handholding on, hey, where do I go to find this information? Um, some of the the feedback from the financial town meeting where we had, you know, a few people that are dialing in for the first time, um, I think it would be good for us to collect some of that feedback and figure out along the way, how do we make this process easier? For example, we have lots of new people coming into town. Um, you know, I'm I'm a new Coventry resident, could this go on the town website and say, what do I need to know? Um, and so maybe we can come together and get a list of common questions that we have and that, or that we've seen maybe on social media, um, so that people have an understanding of of this process in general, and that, yes, right now, the way that everything um is written in the charter, uh, we have an annual vote, so we're going to be doing this process again next year, so um, we want to make sure people are aware that this isn't kind of a one-and-done thing, this will be something that we continue seeing um with the way things are written now, so um maybe we can discuss that offline once we've had a few more days to kind of review all the information and and um put together a few comments on feedback that we've gotten from residents or information we've been able to collect from people and you know, over the last couple of days, uh, and maybe we can get that over to Mr. Marshawn to help us. Also, I know there's some review of the the town website going on, maybe there's an opportunity to put some of this in there and and other locations. Um, and then uh, and then on a more serious note, I did want to, I did want to mention that I had seen some social media comments uh directed at one of the council members here um that I was disgusted with. And I want to mention that everyone has their right to an opinion, um, but if you feel um you know, very negative about something and you want to threaten any of the members on this council, the school committee staff, that will be treated as unacceptable, and we will engage the Coventry Police Department. And so I did want to just mention that we we take, we take um the information that we find on social media very, very seriously, uh, and there are certain, there are certain things that um are borderline threatening, and if we find that to be the case, I don't see every comment that's written, but if I find something that I do find uh possibly threatening to my family or I, I will call the Coventry Police Department. So I did want to just put that out there, most people, ninety-nine percent of people have been very cordial, um, respectful. Um, and uh, in the case for someone who may not have liked the outcome from last week, uh, you have your First Amendment right to talk as much as you want, post as much as you want. Um, but I would ask that you please keep in mind that there's a lot of people seeing what you're writing, and uh to please remain uh in it, or keep your comments in a non-threatening manner toward the people that have, you know, stepped forward and put in a lot of volunteer hours for the town. Thank you.
Ms. Ludwig, Mrs. Lima?
Um, I was wondering if going forward in our review process in the in the week of the the budget vote, we could examine um and, or maybe someone already knows the answer, um, what uh codes or ordinances are in place that um enforce the tactics that were used as far as awareness? I'm not talking about yes, encouraging yes or no, I'm just talking about overall awareness. Um, you know, if we have anything that dictates, you know, the the town must advertise the the vote, the budget referendum X number of days ahead of time, or the town must advertise, or the town must do so in this paper here and here, or put it on the website by this day, you know, I I just, because, you know, it was, this council took it upon themselves to be more transparent and more uh and and do more to to create awareness and really elevate awareness, but that, if if none of us are here, then what happens in future councils? So I just, I don't know if we want to, if it's not already mandated, um, or if it's not driven by code or ordinance, if we want to consider that. Um, and I know I've brought up the same thing about um the canvassing department as well for elections, because I don't think there's a code or ordinance right now that says that elections need to be advertised by that department or or man, so I think that's something overall that should be examined as we move forward. That's it.
Excellent comment. Um, as I mentioned before, I gave a very, very brief summary, it's getting late in the evening. There was a tremendous effort, a variety of strategies, tactics were used. These all need to be examined. Unfortunately, we did not do exit interviewing, uh, so we don't exactly know why, what influenced people, what they saw, what motivated them to go to uh go to vote. Uh, we need to understand that better. We will have a thorough debrief uh with the project team as quickly as possible, where we can bring up some of these items, and we'll also look at processes as Mrs. Lima um has mentioned that would be very important. Um, so the debrief will take place, um, but the amount of effort that was made by a great number of people really does not seem sustainable on a year-to-year basis, so we need to think about whether we need to look at perhaps um reinstating a charter review commission to look at the charter, you use sections that have to do with the passing of a budget and how these might be restructured so that we would be able to do a a better job in in reaching people, and we have to look at um the form of government that we do have. So I think that there is an appetite among many people to uh look at this because the amount of effort that was needed probably is not sustainable, as I said, year after year. Things almost basically came to a halt for two weeks. Things almost basically came to a halt for two weeks before the vote. In order to get outdoor hangers, lawn signs, interviews on uh classic rock, et cetera. Um, all of value did pass the budget. Um, so fortunately, that did happen, but we need to do more. So we, we're going to be discussing this more. We want to get out um the statistics based on um number of people. Um, in each age category, I think that that would be very influential, influential for us to. Any other comments that members of the council would like to add at this moment in time? Mister Marshawn, would you like to make any comments about this first budget with the Coventry Town Council? Now, how many weeks did you have with us?
Oh, I, I think I got nine or ten weeks in before the big day and a lot of fourteen-hour days with Director Mills and. Uh, the staff, uh, we, you know, coming in new, uh, Director Mills started in February. I, I started in April. And we were both up to, uh, in over our heads with trying to catch up on the whole history of the town, the budget, the finances. And uh, while there was a, a fair amount of work that was done in advance and prepared by interim manager at Wazika. Uh, we met with each director and every department to come through every aspect of the budget. Uh, we had multiple meetings with uh our counterparts in the Coventry Public Schools, uh Mister Levis. Uh, Mister Sands, uh, they were all very open and receptive to our meetings and. Uh, it was a true community effort. Uh, everyone came together to try to. Make a, a better case, uh, to provide more transparency and understandability for. Uh, what it takes to build a budget for a community this size, uh, to understand how those uh. Budgets work to deliver the services for our residents. And while you're never going to please everyone in every case. Uh, I think our efforts were positive and uh definitely had a, an impact on the community. To bring more people out in support of it because they recognize the value of what we are trying to do. And that this is just the first step of trying to provide a better, more transparent uh budget process and. Uh, town government. So we look forward to continuing in this path and direction that we've established. And I want to thank the town council, the school committee, the staff. Uh, and the, the residents out there who volunteered their time in support of this effort. Uh, it was a, it was a lot of work, but. Uh, some of us, like Counselor Ludwig and I, still had some fun dancing on street corners and. Uh, trying to boost the, the excitement for the community and the, the Oakers. So, uh, we'll see what we can do to make this process a little less stressful. Uh, a little more prepared, a lot more prepared and uh a lot easier for the public to understand and accept. So they can uh see how their decisions today determine tomorrow's opportunities. And the impact that they can have on their own community where they live, work, and play.
Thank you, Mister Marshawn. Any other comments? Alright, Madam Clerk, uh, read agenda item uh E three.
Approval of National Grid slash Verizon poll location request. Whaley Hollow Road.
Hey, thank you. Mister Marshawn, would you like to make any comments about this uh request?
This is a typical poll relocation or location request from National Grid, so I don't really have any comments to make on that.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? This is in reference to pages fifty-six to fifty-seven in our packet. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, four yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we'll now open it up to public comment. If you have a question, please raise your hand or comment. Please raise your hand, state your name and address. Offer the Madam, uh, Madam Clerk to record it. Is there anyone? Who would like to make a comment this evening? We've had a very full. Agenda this evening. I don't see any hands raised.
As Mr. Z, Wazika used to say, going once, going twice. Going thrice, there are no takers. Your time is up.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-nine?
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote. Uh, raise your hand if you'd like to adjourn. One, two, three, four, four yeas, no nays. The motion is approved. The meeting is adjourned at nine forty P M. We only started at six P M, so um. I think we did, we did well considering the number of agenda items that we did cover. We do have some carryover items for. Uh, June twenty-eighth, so we're looking forward to seeing you. And Mrs. Shockley, enjoy your vacation and please. Uh, for any of these items that are being carried over, please do send in your questions and, and thoughts to Mister Marshawn for us.
I do.
Thank you so much.